Good evening, the time is 6:06. And thank you for being patient with us as we're just getting going here. Everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. We have lots of options. Ms. Sims, if you would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And correction, Dr. Sims, my apologies. Janice, if you could please call the roll.
Mrs. Cheney?
Here.
Mr. Gaddy?
Here.
Ms. Muniz?
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Rodriguez?
Mrs. Davis, here.
Mrs. Spire, that's Sims?
Here.
Mr. Mercier?
Here.
Mr. Yale, Mrs. Rodriguez?
Here.
We have six.
Nicole Rodriguez.
We have six members present, that is a quorum. Ms. Rodriguez, Nicole Rodriguez, Ms. Nancy Rodriguez, Ms. Muniz, and Mr. Sanders are all excused for the evening and they were unable to make it. Okay, first thing that we have up is meditation. Ms. Conley?
If we could take a moment of silence. New Britain's been through a lot this month. We lost brothers, sons, and fathers, if we could just keep them all in our prayers and prayers.
Next item on the agenda is a welcome from Pulaski Middle School.
Good evening. Welcome to Pulaski Middle School. I'm Ms. Whitehead, one of the assistant principals, and I would like to say on behalf of not only the administrative staff, my teachers, and my students, we are grateful to have you here tonight. We appreciate you coming to celebrate some awards. We appreciate you coming to voice your concerns and to remind you that we are a community and we too are here for you. Pulaski general pride, thank you. Please enjoy.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have public participation. Ms. Grigamals, has anyone signed up for public participation?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, you may come up to the podium and speak. Going once, going twice, hearing none, I'm going to call public participation closed. The next item on our agenda. The next item on our agenda is actually an awards presentation for some of our students. And, sir, would you like to speak to?
I can speak to it, yes. And I do see we have our teachers in the audience.
Here you go.
Thank you. I know Mrs. Clerkin just called shortly to say she is in traffic and she is on her way. She is our fine arts coordinator.
She is.
Did you just walk in?
She did.
I was gonna pinch hit for you, Ms. Clerkin. All right. Ms. Clerkin is here.
Oh, that's Ms. Clerkin, if you could. While Ms. Clerkin is actually getting organized, these awards have to do with our sister city of Atsuki, Japan, and I was, I had the pleasure this weekend of working with a woman who benefacted from going to Atsuki, Japan, from her connection to New Britain Schools, Ms. Colleen Casey Nelson. And the partnership between the two cities has really formed some really life-changing bonds. So I think it's really neat that this is still going on today and it's something that I look forward to every year on the board. So with that, Ms. Clerkin?
Thank you so much. I do also want to just start out by saying thank you to everyone who supported in the Heights, for all of you who attended and came to see a really tremendous show. And I'm quite confident that several of those students will be winning awards. They have a Tony Award for high school, which is called the Halo Awards, and fingers crossed that many of them will receive something because it really was outstanding. So thank you for that first. Yes, Atsuki and New Britain have had a sister city relationship for 35 years. So we are very pleased to participate every year. We have five students this year who are being recognized with a student from Smith, Smalley, Gaffney, Howells, and Relk. And we received a lovely letter from the superintendent of Atsuki Board of Education, Takaharu Sota, and he says, "Dear Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Nancy Sarah, I am gratified by the energetic efforts that you dedicated on the sister city relationship between New Britain and Atsuki. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to exhibit the artworks of the children in your school. The public display had a large number of visitors who were impressed with the splendid works. Now I am sending back those artworks and some remembrances. I would be very glad if you would return them with a note and token to each juvenile artist in your city. As always, I am hoping for your good health and success and further development and prosperity." So I also have a picture, if you'd like to see it. I don't know, I think we tried to include it in your packet. Did it go in there? If not, I can bring it up for you. So each student is going to grab their photo, their artwork, and they can go around and shake everybody's hand?
And we have a certificate as well for them as they make their way around.
And for the teachers?
Yes, and for the teachers.
Okay, awesome.
Actually, it might be best if they don't try to carry the art up because that's often juggling.
All right, good. At the end, would you rather have them grab their artwork and then hold it up?
If we could just have the art maybe come forward so we can actually see. Thank you so much.
I was looking for the Phantom White. Just walk across with it.
I'm sorry I was late. I was coaching my daughter's soccer team, so I had to run back from that, so I apologize. From Smith School, art educator Linda Tamiolo and Naielis Martinez. (applause). Linda Tamiolo is here. Thank you, Linda. Would you be so kind as to?
This is.
I'm gonna go rogue, just gonna send that. From Smalley School, art educator Liz Emerson, and the student is Emma Perez, grade three.
Liz Emerson.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
This is Emma's artwork.
Nope, that's yours, and this is for you.
Save that for your college application. That's right.
And Mrs. Stavola is retiring this year after how many years? After 35 years. She will surely be.
Yes. We'll come up. Perfect. From Howells Academy, art educator Ursula Brodowitz and Casper Smirovsky, seventh grade. Brodowitz, thank you. Casper wasn't able to make it tonight.
And Mrs. Brodowitz isn't retiring.
Thank you so much.
We also have a student from Relk, and Ms. Brodowitz also taught her, and her name was Jade Lynn Bellin. Bellin? She's not here either? No, okay. All right, well, thank you so much. Beautiful.
Preschool, right?
Preschool or kindergarten?
Kindergarten, kindergarten. She had Jade Lynn first trimester this year. All right, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all of the hard work from our teachers. Like I said, I really do enjoy seeing this every single year. It's really enjoy, it's just enjoyable to see the good work that's being done by our students. Up next on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mercier. First off, I just want to start with appreciation for our board members. It is Board Appreciation Month, and it just as a small token, our student, actually it's not too small because the artwork that we gave you, the note cards, were all created by our students in New Britain. They're beautiful. And actually, the artist's name is on the back for you, and then there's always chocolate that goes with it because that's good. So I just want to say thank you for making my job better, right, and just for your support throughout the year, and that's on behalf of all of our students and our staff. So we'll start with that. I am gonna ask, this is a little bit different, but I'm gonna ask Dr. Sanders if she wouldn't mind coming up because, and we're gonna be brief here, I promise, and I'm not sneaking in a presentation here, but.
How brief?
Not brief, well, I'm gonna say two to three minutes, right, Dr. Sanders? One, one minute, look at that. Dr. Sanders and Dr. Sims, one of our board members, went to, and Ms. Wanda Liquevar and Ms. Christina Morant. The four of them headed out on a field trip this past week to New York City to go to one of the public schools to look at different EL strategies that are working in different schools. And then there was something additional that I think Dr. Sanders and, did you go with her?
I did.
Okay, and Dr. Sims went too, so go ahead, Dr. Sanders.
So a part of what we want to do in terms of continuing to restructure our district is to look at our programming for our English language learners. So we went to New York to get a better idea of strategies and programings that they're putting in place. So a couple of things that we walked away from the visit was, they use a really integrated and inclusive practices for their little ones where there really is no distinction between a student receiving special education services or an EL learner. And it's premised around research for them and the idea that their teachers are duly certified. So that was a big takeaway, am I correct, Dr. Sims? And New York City has three models that they look at in terms of servicing their EL learners. It's E-N-L, which is English as.
As a new language.
As a new language, dual language programming, as well as transitional and bilingual education. So what we're currently doing under the leadership of Wanda and Christina is looking at our current programming to really go to a more inclusive model instead of the pull-out models with a focus on our newcomers and what they need. Did I miss anything from that, Dr. Sims?
I planned on talking about it in my board report.
I kind of figured that.
Yeah, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So I'll skip the other one and let you just talk about our visit with Paul Sims and his equity team.
Paul Forbes?
Paul Forbes.
Uh-huh.
Would you like to do that one, so I can sit down?
I mean, it's fine either way.
Okay.
I think we'll have different things. We're looking at it from two perspectives.
Okay. Yes, particularly the language piece, so she'll definitely have more to add with that one. The second half of our visit dealt with equity, anti-bias, and diversity, which was more of our work and where we are in terms of dealing with our implicit bias that has an impact on education. So we met Paul Forbes in February when the superintendent and a few of us went to Atlanta for whole school conference reform. One of the biggest takeaways that I got was the commitment to diversity work from the chancellor to the officers in the Equity Office, to the superintendents, to the principals, to the teachers. We were a part of a session where the teachers, the schools actually had an equity goal on their campus improvement plan. So moving forward currently with our work with Rebecca Good, we're gonna continue to make our administrators more aware of implicit bias and the impact on education. And then the next steps, if you look at the superintendent's report, is actually to possibly have the board members as well as the superintendent go down for their own field trip with Paul Forbes and his team because New York is really doing a phenomenal job systematically and systemically with addressing equity as a whole.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. Couple of updates, I visited two churches this past couple of weeks. I was fortunate enough to be at St. Mary's for both masses, as well as, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna remember the church, on Stanley Street, to just do parent outreach, family outreach, and just ask for their partnership as we, you know, work with our students and their role that they should be playing in the educational process. So both were very well received, they were good visits. We also had a council member reach out to us earlier in the month and ask to tour Howells Academy because that was one of the issues that we had spoken about in terms of budget cuts, as well as a school that they felt represented the overcrowding and those issues. And so Councilwoman Magshewski and several other council members came and we toured both, and we had really good conversations. They lasted a few hours and they did get to see overcrowding at homes in terms of small reading groups are happening in hallways. There really is no other space to be had. And so that was, I thought, a really positive conversation and hopefully will continue. We also had, we had a lot of visitors this month, but Senator Blumenthal, Representative Johanna Hayes, and Chris Murphy, thank you, couldn't think of the third, came to visit with our high school students a couple of weeks back to talk about the potential of having our teachers with arms in school and what impact that would have. Great insight from our students. I mean, one that I think that Blumenthal said I didn't even think of that was, she said, "I want to be a teacher, but there's no way I'm gonna teach if you tell me I have to carry a weapon in school." And so, you know, her perspective was it's a sure way to turn off anyone who's thinking that education is a route they want to take. And just it was a really good conversation. Mr. Pierce was present as well, and I said, and our students were so articulate, and they have a lot of answers, they have a lot of solutions to problems. So that was really good. And also, we have our welcome center that's open now at New Britain High School, providing building tours to our families, and I've given you more, there's more to each of those bullets, you can read that for yourself. I wanted to just again thank Downs Construction. We did have a press conference with them last week. As you're aware, it's their 85th anniversary slash birthday here in town, and as a part of giving back to the community, they've decided to, I keep thinking it's like a publisher clearinghouse, find unsung heroes, teachers in our district who go above and beyond all of the time, and they're presenting them with $1,000 checks for their classrooms. And so we've been to Gaffney, we've been to Transition Center, and we've been to, there's a third, but we will continue these gifts of, what was it? Thank you, you're right, Chamberlain. We'll continue these gifts throughout the rest of the year and into next year until they give up their $12,000 that they're dedicated to giving. Again, Ms. Clerkin spoke about it in the Heights. And then we also have our 10 New Britain High School Health Academy students participated in the HOSA Spring 2019 Leadership Conference in Waterbury. They brought home first and third place medals in public service announcements and existing medical innovation. And so we're very proud of our kids there. Also, we have our STEAM exhibits going on now, we have parent conferences all week, and we have our STEAM demonstrations and presentations in all of the buildings. I was able to get to, I had an hour and a half that I could sneak out today, and I did go to Lincoln's, Slade's, and then up to Gaffney's. Amazing to see our K-1 students with push and pull and forces create miniature golf courses, along with putters that you could actually play the course. That was amazing. Students in grades two and three that are looking at materials to build housing depending on what the area they're living in, so really understanding different construction. And then force of motion and turbines, our students in fourth and fifth grade, and sixth through eight. So if any board members have an opportunity during, it's on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this week, and then also Thursday evening, it'd be great if you could get out to see some of the presentations. They were wonderful.
Thank you. At this time, if there are any, next on the agenda is committee updates. Dr. Sims, any updates from curriculum?
We had a very short meeting and nothing really new, just continuing the conversation about upcoming changes to course names and things like that.
Thank you very much. Personnel, Ms. Cheney?
We also met last week, and I think there is one new position that we're recommending that's on the agenda for tonight.
Finance and facilities and transportation, Ms. Conley?
Finance, you will see, we had a relatively long meeting, but it was pretty productive, I think. And we are taking in $18,000 from Nellie May. That is it. I mean, we just, it was busy. We had a lot of, you know, Chrome cards, Chromebooks, just trying to get everything up to speed. Some new technology, which is kind of cool, I might actually pull that off the consent agenda because I'm super excited about it, but that's all.
Okay, policy also met, and, you know, continuing the conversations, and we also looked at the, briefly at the superintendent's five-year plan and trying to identify some places where policy work can intersect with that. Any other board reports at this time? Dr. Sims?
It could be fun. All right, awesome. So I attended the transportation forum with the superintendent this past month, and that was good. It was good to see a lot of families out there discussing different issues about transportation and having a productive and collaborative talk. I also went to go see In the Heights, which was amazing. So congrats and thank you to everyone who had any part of that. It was, I was telling my husband, we spent about half a mortgage payment going to see Hamilton at the Bushnell in December, and for 10 bucks, we definitely got something that was absolutely Broadway quality. It was amazing. As Dr. Sanders was saying, her and Wanda Liquevar and Christina Morant and I went to New York City. We had a school visit at PS 236, which is an elementary school of 330 students, and the focus of looking at that school was looking at their integration model. And while we talked a lot and asked a lot of questions about EL learners, it was also very much about special education students, and I thought it was just really impressive the way the school has a full integration model where there's not pull-out, not just for the ESL students, but also for students who are special ed. You walk in a classroom and it is nearly impossible to tell who is who and what they have. So that was very cool, and we talked about some of the other models. New York City has some transitional bilingual models in different schools, and then also dual language, which Dr. Dela Cruz, who is one of our Perkins partners, you know, admitted and whatever as we talked, that obviously research shows that is the absolute best way to educate ELs. And so in the past six years or so, New York has added over 50 dual language models to their programs. We didn't get to observe one of those that day, but I just want to share that. And then Dr. Sanders and I were able to visit a principal's conference for District One in New York City and look at their equity work as a whole district. The chancellor is very committed to the work of equity, and it was impressive just to see how systemic the rollout has been and very, very purposeful, which is, you know, how you can make that kind of work be effective. So in the meeting, someone from the Office of Equity and Diversity gave a presentation reminding everyone of kind of how the rollout had been occurring and what the three components of their plan were. And then a school actually gave a presentation sharing how they were implementing it in their own school, and they had an approach where it was very community oriented and their doors are open to the community, especially on Fridays, very purposefully for documentary viewing, for voluntary book groups, book clubs, and all of it was very well attended. So it was just nice to see how they looked at equity not only as was going on in the four walls of the school between, you know, school hours, but also how it extended to the community. So that's it.
Any other board members?
Can I just add, in case you missed it, about In the Heights? I'm gonna yell.
In case you missed it, In the Heights was fabulous. Nelva Marquez-Green from the Antigone Foundation was there Friday night, live tweeting about the show on opening night, and on one of her tweets, Lin-Manuel Miranda himself said, "Tell them I said to break a leg." And that did get around, and I think that was just a fabulous shout-out to our students, so.
Any other board members?
I know, I'm really quick.
I was just gonna say, In the Heights, if you didn't get to see it, amazing. Like, our kids were just amazing. And then I wanted to give a huge shout-out to our basketball team for making it as far as they did. I mean, some of you know the backside of the story of the drama that these kids lived the day before the Glastonbury game. For them to pull that off was just absolutely amazing.
I attended the gun conference at the high school too, and I was really impressed by the students and the things that they had to say. Also, I went to Northern for the little spelling bee. My granddaughter won second place in the spelling bee, yeah. And then the third thing is In the Heights. And the only thing I want to say about that, every year I have four granddaughters that I take to these plays, and the youngest is six years old this year, and she can be a challenge. So usually I have to threaten her with having my husband come pick her up if she doesn't behave, but she was so into this, In the Heights, that she sat through the whole thing on the edge of her seat, and we didn't have any problems this year, so it was really wonderful.
In the Heights was an amazing show, and I, you know, took me back to my days of high school theater, and I was just very, very impressed. So I'll just say that at the legislature, there've been a whole bunch of bills on K-12 education, there's probably seen that there's been talk of regionalization. What has come out of that is a much watered-down version to encourage cooperation between districts, but there may actually be opportunities for us to look at cooperating with some of our surrounding districts. We are pretty much out of space here. And so that's to be explored.
So unrelated to In the Heights, I actually had the opportunity two weeks ago to attend a national music teachers' conference that I, I go to and work at every year. And it was really interesting to see some of the national conversations that are happening around equity and culturally responsive classrooms and all of the types of things that we've been starting to talk about here. And, you know, we always feel like we're trying, we're always trying to catch up and we're always trying to do better. But it's, it was kind of refreshing to go to a national conference and see that we're not maybe as bad off as we thought we were or we're, we're making some decent headways. So I think it's something that we can be proud of is that we're having these conversations and, you know, trying to move the needle on some of these issues. So that's just something that I think, you know, we can be proud that we're trying to take on because it's a huge issue. Any other board members? Good. Moving on, the superintendent has requested that we add just two items to the agenda. So this would be a 5D and a 5E. The first one is going to be an update on pending legal matters. And the second is going to be two administrative appointments. Do I have a motion to add those to the agenda? Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Cheney. All those in favor of adding the two items to the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I would now entertain a motion to go into executive session on those two items, 5D and E, just so we can get them out of the way near the top of our meeting. Motion made by Ms. Cheney, seconded by Ms. Conley. Any discussion on the motion? We will be joined by Dr. Tucker and we may ask the candidates to come in if the board wishes. So we'll have someone get them if we need them. Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, we are in executive session. We will return shortly. Thank you for your patience. Okay, the time is seven o'clock. We are back in session. Can I please have a motion on 5E? Which would be, first, can I entertain a motion for the appointment of Ms. Heather Nichol as elementary school principal at Holmes Elementary School? Moved by Ms. Cheney, seconded by Ms. Conley. Discussion? Ms. Sarah?
I think probably everyone can hear me. I'm pretty sure, but I'll go for the mic. I just want to bring Ms. Nichol's name forward. Ms. Nichol has been with the district for many, many years. And I said her interview started about 20 years ago. And so we felt very confident. We had three levels to the interview process, teachers, families, and then the second was administrators. And then the final level was myself along with our assistant superintendent. And on every level, Ms. Nichol's name rose to the top and that's consistent with who she is. She works very hard. She is very detail-oriented. I always know that if I need feedback, honest feedback, I can go to Ms. Nichol and get the honest, what's real. She is a champion for our students. She works very hard. I think her staff could probably echo. She's highly organized. That's a trait, you know, we all aspire to be, but she just, and I know she works countless hours. And we're really excited to bring her name forward tonight and recommending her for principal at Holmes Elementary School. And I see she's here with her husband and her two boys, who I knew when they were born, so.
Any other board members which wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. If you could please come forward and accept the congratulations of the board. And I just, she's gonna say a few words. This setup is not the most conducive.
Yeah, it's very far. So you've heard my story many times before. I've been teaching, programming, and leading the youth of New Britain for over 30 years, starting at the age of 15, working for the Park and Recreation Department. And so clearly, this is a great next step in terms of my service to the youth of New Britain. Ironically, when I did my, when I entered into my student teaching program, so first you do your fieldwork, which was at Holmes Elementary School. And then it came time to do the student teaching and my professor said, "Well, you have to go to a suburban district because you already had the urban experience." And I said, "No, but I'm going to work for the children of New Britain. I need to do my student teaching here in New Britain." And they told me that's not how the program is set. So I had to advocate to get myself a teaching, a student teaching position here in New Britain. So I do feel proud that 20, over 20 years later, I'm still advocating for that job of working for the children of New Britain. And I'm very fortunate to be surrounded by a lot of great teams. The most important team is right up front, my home team. My husband Scott, who is a visionary educational leader in his own right as the superintendent of Schools of Ellington. He's a super supportive partner for me and a fabulous and wonderful father and coach for our boys. My two sons, Carson, who we just literally pulled off of the baseball field. He's in the middle of his middle school baseball tryouts to come here tonight. And Reese, my nine-year-old. And I thank them because they understand that mom can't be at every game. Luckily, we do have two sets of retired educator grandparents who are at every game. Also, I've had the great opportunity to be surrounded by a lot of great administrators here in New Britain. So my administrative team, I want to thank. And finally, my new team at Homeschool. I appreciate you allowing me to lead you through a difficult situation. And I'm really excited about the opportunity and the work that we have ahead of us as a team. So thank you all.
And the other appointment that we had under item 5E was the appointment of Gina Polly as an elementary school principal with locations still to be determined. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Parker. And a discussion? Ms. Parker actually knows her.
I, I know Gina from summer school. Her dad used to work in summer school and I used to run the summer school program. And as a little girl, she was very bossy. Kind of in charge, so you knew she was going places. And, and her enthusiasm is just unbelievable. So I think she's gonna be a great motivator, not only for the, the students, but for the parents and for the teachers. And we're so proud to have Gina continue her time here in New Britain. So she's going on about 30 years' worth of time in New Britain now.
Anyone else? Ms. Sarah?
Thank you. So I, I don't know Ms. Polly for as long as Ms. Parker did, obviously. But again, Ms. Polly came and her passion for educating students is admirable and contagious. I said, "I think I've met a match in terms of energy." She has a lot to offer our students. We're very excited to bring her on. And as she said, it's reciprocal. She's bringing to us a lot of knowledge, 19 years in the Hartford Public Schools, and now coming to us. And we're hoping that we can instill a new, new learning as well and that it will be a relationship where our kids flourish. So we're excited to have her on board.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Polly, if you could come forward and get, accept the congratulations of the board. They did a nice job taping them now.
Good evening. I am honored to be up here and to become a principal in the New Britain school system. Like Ms. Parker shared with you all, I was four, going to Smith Elementary School with my dad. Any day I had off, I was in a school. My brother and sister hated me because we used to try to play school with them at home. I used to correct my dad's papers. I knew I was gonna be a teacher from the get-go. I tried to play a trick on him and start in college in a different program, but my love has always been teaching. And I, unfortunately, when I went through my student teaching, I was so excited because I went into the urban track and I'm like, "I'm going to New Britain. I'm gonna student teach in New Britain." But they were like, "Your dad is too well-known. You're going to Hartford." And I said, "Okay, I'll go to Hartford." And Hartford has given me so many opportunities. I have learned so much. Like Ms. Sarah had shared with you, I cannot wait to give you my knowledge and take your knowledge with me. I am beyond ecstatic and I know I have what it takes to do the best for our children and to make them successful so that they can be lifelong learners. Again, thank you. My husband is with me. I should say thank you to my husband. This is my husband. He is my best friend and my daughter unfortunately had a lot of homework, so she's with my dad and my mom. She's out there, but thank you.
And just for information, the start dates on that, Ms. Nichols is actually starting in her new role tomorrow, effective tomorrow. Yeah, no time off. But Ms. Polly will be joining us July 1st. Okay. So we're gonna go back now to the start of our agenda. We have two presentations. I know many of the people are coming out to support the, the families of the new appointees. Some of the families and parents in the audience might be interested about our first presentation here, which is a, about the redesign of our Family Resource Center. So if you have a few minutes and are willing to stick around for the presentation, we, you might enjoy it. I'd also like to just take a moment to note that Alderman Danny Slairnow is in the audience. I missed him sneaking in. Thank you, Ms. Sarah, for reminding me. But with that, we're going to go to our Family Resource Center redesign presented by Ms. Sanford. And for the board members, we do have a copy of the presentation in our folders.
We have cognitive flexibility.
Why don't you just, here, why don't you just take the mic then? There's plenty of play on it.
All right, thank you for having me. I'm Sandra Sanford, Coordinator of Partnership and Engagement at New Britain High School. Nope, not New Britain High School, Consolidated School District of New Britain. Apologize about that. Over the course of the year, we've been looking at our Family Resource Centers. I've been here a few times talking about the staff and the titles and the names. And we've done some research with surrounding towns that are similar to ours about how they run their program and really to look out how best we can run ours. So today, I'm just gonna talk about the proposal of how we like to see the vision of the Family Resource Centers for, in the future. So why redesign? At first, we want to redesign our Family Resource Center because we want to have a vertically alignment from our birth to grade 12 with all of our staff that are in the, what I'll call now the Family Resource Center. But by the end of the presentation, I won't. And we want to have a systemic approach. As always, we want to reduce chronic absenteeism. And we want to have one title. So when we're redesigning our department, we want to have a similar approach to that of when teachers get hired, when social workers get hired, when administrators get hired. It's all one title with the same vision, but the focus and the age group changes. So when we bring in staff and we work with our staff, we want to have a similar approach and call the department under the Partnership Office, Family School Liaisons. Again, why redesign? I've been working with talent as well as in finance and looking at all the different job titles we currently have that, for the staff that are within the Family Resource Center and the Attendance Office. And these are just a sample of the titles that exist in New Britain from Family Intervention Liaison, Family Intervention Specialist, FRC Lead Site Coordinator, FRC Site Coordinator, Parent Educator, Parent Teacher, Family Support Advocate, Attendance Monitor, and so forth. These are samples. When we pull together all the funding sources for all these staff, there's a variety of different funding sources from alliance to local to Title IV, Title I, and some community grants and then the FRC grant. So combining all those together, we, we were able to put together a proposal for tonight to really streamline our efforts with the vertically alignment and a systemic approach, again, to reduce chronic absenteeism as well as family outreach. So vertically aligned in a systemic approach. Here's the proposal. With all of that resource and research, identifying what the locations would be if all of our staff, if we worked to have the staff as a family school liaison, we want to break them into, similar to that of a teacher in elementary, a teacher in middle school, and a teacher in high school. Have Family Resource Center staff, nine full-time staff, that focus on outreach, parent engagement, chronic absenteeism, and be the liaison from the families to the, the school system. So if the, of the nine family school liaisons, the new title, four of them would work specifically in the elementary arena from birth to grade five. They would, their primary focus is families. The next phase is grade six through eight, three family school liaisons. Their primary focus is families and students. In the elementary schools, typically if a student is absent, it's the adult in their environment. So the family, the focus is family. When students enter into the middle school, we kind of, we want to give them a little bit more of empowerment, but still keep the families included to ensure that they're having successful experience in school and attending. And the second phase is having two family school liaison staff members primarily focusing on students. They're old enough to make their decisions. They are making some of their own decisions. And we want to make sure we're building relationships with the students to keep them coming to school. Again, all of this work as a family school liaison, regardless of the age. We're all family school liaisons, ensuring that we are connecting the dots between the family, the home, the resources, school. So more outreach to families. If the, if we design, actually, when we design the 40, the four FSLs for the elementary grades, and I have, have a caseload. So each individual would have a caseload of 40 families. Four FSLs in the elementary, that means 160 additional families would, we would have an outreach program for so that we have identified resources and support to 160 additional families in just the elementary grades.
Ms. Sanford, can I just, can you talk about what we, what our research found for our current FRC model and the number of families, approximately number of families served?
In our current model?
In our current model.
All right. So in the, in the data, we have approximately 11 to 16 families that are being served in the FRC. And with the weather and the, it's, in the winter months, it goes down to eight.
And you have one less person?
We have currently three running FRC.
Only one of them is funded by the state, right?
Three of them are funded.
Three of them are funded by the state. The one that we, we had to take one off because at that time, I think we received $306,000. We had to pay three sites and a hundred.
Correct. I think a year ago it was four.
Right. And we had to reduce by one, which gave us three. But when we look at new instances or families that we're serving, the families that are coming are the families that come, right? And so the outreach to the families who are disengaged or we know through data need support and need outreach, that's, that's what we're trying to target now.
And some of the, and to add to that, from our research in surrounding towns that are doing a little bit better than we are, we're getting better at getting better, has a similar model in the sense that there is more outreach. And it's great that we have the services inside, but we're leveraging our community partners that can do some of those services. those services so that we can focus on 140 families as a caseload and then identifying the needs, but not necessarily always providing those resources, but finding someone in the community or our community partners that has those, the skills and the certifications for those resources. It's more of the leveraging.
Can I, I just want to clarify. So you're looking at 160 families. Are you saying that totals right now, you're lucky to have, be servicing 16 families total?
And I'm giving the results from one that I can remember specifically, one school that, looking at the data, had eight families.
So it might be, it might be 16, and then now you're looking at four. Is that?
Each person has a 40 family caseload. So, and that's important because if we have four, four staff FSLs that are focusing, it's 160 families. So the Play and Learns and the Lunch Bunch, and they're great interventions for families. But how do we expand that? And we've, I've been saying this for a year, we have three FRCs in three schools. What's happening to the other seven? That's not fair to the other seven schools that aren't experiencing the same type of resources. With this model, all 10 elementary schools will now have resources.
And how are the families identified? Who identify?
So I'm going to get to that in the second half of the presentation, if that's okay?
Yeah.
And then we'll get back to that. Okay. All right. So birth to five, birth to grade five, we have four FSL sharing, and they will be assigned to school versus floating so that families can make the connection. In sixth through eighth grade, we have three FSL, 40 families each. That's 120 additional families. And then grades nine through 12, two FSLs added to the high school family staff, and that would be 80 additional families. That's three, if, 360 families in the first year of outreach efforts that may or may not have been done already. That's 360 families. That's a large percentage of our families in the district that may not even be aware of all the resources we have or what's offered in the community. Didn't realize the yellow one pop up so well. So part of the reason, what we're going to get to next is, in addition to the FSL, so where do they fit in the big picture of the school district? The Family School Liaisons with the, have been playing part on some of the attendance team meetings. What we'd like to do moving forward is change the name of the attendance teams meeting, so there's something more positive, focusing on RTI, Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, but has a positive name to brand it. But what we have this year is the District Attendance Team. That gets together once or twice a month, focusing on a systemic approach for how do we address chronic absenteeism for Tier One, Two, and Three. Most recently, all the folks are on there. I'm not going to list them all. Most of them are here, and I'm supposed to go really fast. But the key focus is, of the key functions of the District Attendance Team is to routinely unpack data to do something district-wide, to identify some of the things we can do, infrastructure, and also for behavior. So every time we meet, we look at some of the components, whether it's transportation, whether it's the calendar, whether it's the weather days, whether it's a certain, if it's Halloween, if it's November 1, if it's a half-day, looking at infrastructure to identify what we can do as a system in place to ensure that we're promoting attendance. The other half is getting to the root cause of the behaviors for the chronic absenteeism. So we, we meet to discuss and look at the data and unpack it, and then identify what our plan is for the future, for the year and for next year. We, once, four times a year, we go to the district for a peer learning network with similar towns to talk about what is everyone doing to address chronic absenteeism. The current focus is moderately chronic. So how does a District Attendance Team work to ensure the school attendance teams are in line? And the future vision of those attendance teams are listed in your packet, which is probably clearer. So with the Family School Liaisons now being assigned a District Attendance Team to a school, and you had asked earlier, how does that work? So the attendance teams that meet now, there's always an administrator that is the, oversees the team. But the social worker is going to work hand-in-hand with the team to help identify those families so that it's, with the referral process or whether it's a meet-and-greet that they had with the family. But there's going to be more collaboration between the FSL and a social worker in the building. And we just met, we've been meeting monthly to go over this proposal, to go over the plan and get the voice of the social workers. And the Family Resource Center staff has seen this proposal maybe four or five times. Social workers have seen this proposal so that we can get everyone's voice to really create a model that works sustainable for over the many years.
Can I just add one thing? I promise I'll be brief. Okay, I'm going to do it anyway. So for us, again, we know there's a big need to help engage the disengaged. And we currently have a social worker in every building. They can't do it all because they're managing crisis on a day-to-day basis. They're managing hours that are on their IEPs. They have to do all of that. So what we're trying to do is build a team for the social worker. And you can see the administrator obviously is in charge in the building, but the social worker also has, with our community partners, Community Health Center and Klingberg, but we have BSAs, Behavior Support Assistance. They will be, we're going to be putting those forward for every building to have at least one. They will be working with the social worker. The social worker will be, and again, we like to say the BSAs are the ones that build relationships during the school day in the building. Our FSLs, those folks at the elementary level, like Sandra had said, it's around family and engagement, but it's working with similar families. The BSAs and the FSLs, BSAs will build relationships during the day. The FSLs are expected to do outreach outside of the school day. They'll have a flexible schedule. I can tell you at the middle school right now, we have our Friday night baller program going on, you know, with 30, we have 35 young men. We're going to be starting with women soon, on Friday nights from 9:00 to midnight. And that will be the role of the FSL, to engage the students that need to be brought back in. And so we're building, we're building a team for a social worker. So it's not all on them. We can do more outreach outside of the school day and within with the BSA.
And I want to add, Superintendent Sarah and I met with the state who oversees the FRC grant, and they were ready and willing to hear a new idea and how the Family Resource Center, the old title, should, the proposal for it, looking for some form of a model that will work. So they were very open and welcome to the idea of changing it. So the next three slides are really all the same. We go from the future vision of the elementary systemic approach to the middle school. If you notice, it's always the administrator on top. I do want to bring a focus to the social worker, that the folks that are on the team for the attendance team are not reporting to the social worker. This is a collaborative event. That's why they all report up. But the social worker has the skills and the knowledge to identify those families and can bring the background knowledge of what resources are needed. And the bottom gets wider and wider by grade because of the resources that are existing from one building. So these are the minimum requirements of those teams. So our next steps is to meet with talent, to create, revise, look at all those job descriptions. There's probably 12 different job descriptions, to ensure that we're covering the basis in regards to not leaving an important task out or creating a new one using our research from surrounding schools, who their Family School Liaisons are. Meeting with the finance to create the sustainable financial structure, looking at all the funding sources that we have, and then presenting it to the finance and personnel committees.
And it won't cost additional?
It's, there's not, right. This is all within, right.
That was a good question. We're using existing dollars in a different way. Again, we're reimagining now what our Family Resource Center dollars, along with the title, the title dollars, can get us.
Correct. We're not, in the proposal, there's no ask for anything extra. It's to restructure and leverage the way it's running to create that vertically alignment so that the high school FSL is not visiting the same family as the elementary FSL and creating a vertical alignment. And as the fifth graders move to the sixth grade, still staying with those families for fifth grade, but sharing them and passing them on to the sixth grade FSL so that they don't lose resources. Our current model, they leave the resources and in kindergarten, in this model, in kindergarten because the focus is they don't follow the students into the whole five years, or three years and four years. Any questions?
I just have a comment. And the reason I asked my question about how they get referred was because unfortunately, it feels like they're not referred until there's a problem. And I don't know what system is in place for getting them before, you know, you're saying they're servicing birth to grade five, but in many cases, they're not. If they have older children, then hopefully you're raising the whole family up. But, you know, if it's a first child, so I didn't know whether you're working maybe with birth to three or, you know, with just some of the Play and Learn, so programs and those kind of things where you can encourage the families, get them on board before there is a problem. And I hope that's...
I agree. We're working with the school readiness and Megan, as well as the birth to three. But the other thing is, we are looking at a tool that Meriden uses, and they actually, it's a referral process. So it, right on the technology, if the social worker of the team says, "Please go visit," within 48 hours, you'll know if the visit was done. So identifying the data points for referral process and then ensuring that anyone on the team, that all FSLs could see that report with the social workers and the guidance at the high school to identify who's being referred and actually going down to birth to three. So they would be part of the, part of the group that could have access to that.
Any other questions?
Just really quick. Where's our highest chronic absenteeism right now? Is it elementary school? High school?
I'm going to say, and someone can clarify, but kindergarten, elementary is super high. And we actually went to the PLN Learning, which is Peer Learning Network with the state, and it was, there was a...
I think the GAT is the highest elementary. And we did count that, which are the districts not, we did count that.
Correct. The preschool, right. And the high school. So when we're looking at the systemic approach, we are looking at birth to grade five, and then the high school is being the highest. We need to bridge that across.
Other questions? Mr. Gay?
Well, anytime you're repurposing, you're doing, you're not doing something, do something new. What are we not doing?
What we're not doing is spending more time calling families versus going out and seeing what's going on. More of an outreach approach. We're having more time management in regards to the Play and Learns. If the Play and Learn is on Tuesday and Wednesday, we are doing flyers to ensure all families that the two schools you may be assigned to know that Tuesday and Wednesday. On Thursday, you assign some of those other interventions. It could be the outward-facing model. You keep one day open where you don't have a planned event in the building so that you can go out and do the planned events in the community. Time management, more face-to-face interaction, and leveraging some of our staff.
And oversight.
Oversight, right.
Oversight is a big...
I'd just like to add as a general comment, I'm glad to hear that some of the goals that, you know, that we're talking about here seem to be extending beyond just chronic absenteeism. Because while I understand why that's such a focus and such a target for us, I, I know that there are also families where the kids come to school, but the families still need supports. And so I'm glad that we're looking at ways of helping those families as well through these programs because it's not, chronic absenteeism can't be the only indicator for what we're targeting for, for these interventions.
Most often, it's the symptom that comes from it. So providing resources for the families to know how to provide resources at home to make it easier transition at school and awareness. I mean, it's a tough age.
Yeah. Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Can I just throw?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a second presentation from Mr. Mark Spalding, and this was a pupil services data update. This is, I believe, based off of information we requested at our last board meeting. Okay, thank you.
I just want to mention, I'm on the same team as Sandra on the attendance team. And I want to use this opportunity to give a shout-out to Transitional Center because they've been averaging around 80% monthly attendance. And this school has really worked in the last few weeks to improve that. And they hit, for the month of March, which we know is a tough month, to get kids in over 90%. So that's a shout-out to them. Okay. So you did ask me to review CPI and also restraining seclusion data, but I figured because I'm coming in today, that I'd also give you a little bit more. So I have suspension data, expulsions, and I, since we are at the beginning of April, I figured we'd touch on out-of-district placements right now, so give you all that today. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. All right. So this slide here, and you have this in front of you, shows by grade, people who have been CPI trained. Now, this is not Moab training. Moab is more of, is based more on a correctional model, where CPI, of course, is based on the focus on de-escalation. So right now, we have 206 people who have been trained in, staff-trained, and we have 16 administrators. And you can see in each column where we have some holes. So I've noted, you know, I think I have a concern right now with DeLoreto, Smalley, and then if you go to the next slide, at the high school, we have no administrators trained there. We only have a dean in this building. So those are areas that we're looking at. Also, we do have related service persons and some social workers. District-wide, we have five people trained there. We are doing a training, we're opening a training after the 23rd of this month that will make available. We're going to reach out to administrators and other staff that we believe, particularly in those buildings that I mentioned, that should have training. And then we will put together a schedule for the rest of the year and look at, you know, when we can do this over the summer as well. Okay? Any questions there?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm pretty sure it's not Consumer Price Index. What does CPI stand for?
Crisis prevention intervention, yeah. Okay. All right, suspensions.
I have been trained.
Oh, you have? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. Yeah. And then, you know...
And one.
All right, one. Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, appears. Okay. All right, suspension data. All right. So this is not as rosy. The first, the top is the number of suspensions total for 2018, 19, and the lower part is last year. So overall, this year, we have over 1,100. Last year, we had 800. The difference at the bottom is the special ed numbers. So the second column, you'll see, it says, there's a Y. Those are the number of special ed students. So right now, we're at 470. That's plus 94 over last year. However, I do want to note that the number of special ed students, and this is not on your chart, the number of special ed students who have had one or more suspensions this year is actually down by 6% over last year. So that is good. So some of these obviously are repeat offenders. So we are working on that, and we're working on supporting our special ed teams. Our coordinators will be meeting with the staff, the teams, and the administrators to talk about ways to, again, restorative approach. I just want to let you know that also on the 15th, my department did hold a PD day. And the afternoon, there were 11 sessions that staff could choose from. And two of those, we had people in the district who provided support, but we also had folks from the state, KREK, Klingberg come in, and they provided training in this area. And the response, don't have the, we did a survey that's not ready yet, but the overwhelming response was, was very positive. But we did address some of this. Okay, can we go to expulsion data, please? Okay, so right now, in the district, and this is good news. So we have a third last right now, expulsions than we had last year. We're at 11. We do have 13. Two of those were KREK students, magnet school kids that KREK did suspend for cause, and we are expelled, rather, for cause, and we are supporting those. But in our own district, we right now have eight from this building and then three from the high school. There are a couple pending right now. I don't know how those will go, but right now, that's the number. Last year, we had over 35. Okay, we'll go to restraining seclusion now?
I have a quick question.
Yep.
If KREK expelled those kids, we've already paid for their funding, right? We don't get that money back.
No, we don't. After October 1st, we don't, yeah, yeah. We don't have that.
And just for general public information, the difference between expulsion and suspension?
Well, expulsion, you know, you can, you cannot be in the building, in one of our buildings. So, and that could, it can range up to a full school year, or it could be less. It depends on the offense. And we, we really try to work, you know, work with the families. It depends on the offense, and we really try to work, you know, work with the families. Superintendent Sarah has been great. She comes to these, and she gives her motherly speech, which is quite impressive, you have to be there. And I think we've really worked with, we've worked with some families, and it's been real positive. It really has. Okay, restraint and seclusion data. So right now, now, I do wanna note, in looking at this data this week and weekend, I'm not certain it is one-hundred percent accurate. In fact, I know it isn't, and we'll talk about that. But this is the restraint and seclusion data that is reported from the state. So we, when, when there is a restraint that occurs, forms have to be filled out, we get that data in my office, and the schools send that to the state. It's required. So this is the numbers that we have currently. Right now, we've had, up to date, as of last week anyways, we had five-hundred-and-twenty-nine restraint and seclusions within the district, reported to the state of Connecticut, and those seventy-nine students were involved with that. So it's not five-hundred-and-twenty-nine kids, seventy-nine kids. So some of those are repeats, obviously. And it shows the number of restraints, the number of seclusions, and the total in that column. That's from K through twelve.
This is the number of kids? Yeah. Mark, can you go back?
Pardon? I'm talking about the number of, yeah, the number of kids, right?
We have a page that just says restraint and seclusion data.
That's the, that's the one. There's no totals on it.
Yeah, we don't-
Wait, I gave you, I'm just giving you the totals. So we've had seventy-nine students who were involved with the number of restraints this year. Okay? If you go to the next page, again, it lists the number from TC, the Sunrise Building, Holmes, Gaffney, that's Brookside, the key program at Slade, and the behavior program at Holmes. For instance, I wanna point out the, if you look at the first line, MBTC, that's TC, there are a hundred-and-forty-five restraints reported there. Sixty-four of those were involved with only two kids. Two kids were responsible for sixty-four of those. And one of those is the power that you just approved for support of one of those kids. That was a PPT decision. If we, if we don't have that support in the building, he'll be out of district. So, but I just wanna let you know, two of those, two kids, so far this year, comprise sixty-four of those. The next page, next one. Okay. So these schools reported zero. Holmes Elementary, in their regular population, they have had none. And also, the RLP numbers are accurate. Jefferson, Lincoln, and Pulaski, those have not been reported correctly. So I know for a fact that Pulaski, the principal reported today that he's had actually thirteen this year. So I think there's been, I think certain people in certain buildings, maybe they don't know how to do their reporting. So we, my coordinators are gonna be providing training on that. That's already started. I actually, this weekend, I sent out the law on restraint and seclusions that lists everything to every principal in the district, so they have that. And now the coordinators will be going in to support the buildings and make sure that the reporting is done correctly. When a restraint or seclusion is reported to the state, it is updated in real time. So if I report one now, one, it'll go in there. So we're gonna have the schools look at the data again, go in and report the ones that have already occurred, that we have the paperwork on, and then moving forward, it will be done in a timely fashion in all buildings. Because my concern is if the state looks at this, it's gonna raise questions, and I certainly don't want people to come in from the outside auditing, so we'll be doing our own internal audit. Lastly, out-of-district placements. All right. So currently, so when the school year started, there were ninety-six students outplaced. Right now, we have, at this moment, and this is a fluid number, kids come and go, we have a hundred-and-eighteen. So a plus of twenty-two. If you go to the next slide, you will see, as of today, the number of kids, there's a hundred-and-eighteen. We have it broken down. The first column, those sixty-six kids, sixty-six of the students have been placed out by us. Five of those are this year. So as a district, this year, we've outplaced five kids to date. Some of those are in what we call a diagnostic placement, so it's not permanent. So for forty to forty-five days, we're evaluating whether that child needs that. So I think all but one of those five are in that type of a placement. So really, there's one that is permanently outplaced, the other four are in diagnostic placements of those five. Twenty-two students that we have currently outplaced were transferred in from other towns. Seven of that, seven of those occurred this year. Two were for Magnet Schools. There are just, our kids in Hartford Magnet Schools, and one of those occurred this year. We have, we have two from medical placements, we have one this year. DCF has placed nineteen of our hundred-and-eighteen, and five of those this year. Court placement, seven total, three this year. And there's your twenty-two. If you go to the next page, you'll see that we have, these currently have the hundred-and-eighteen, we have six pre-K kids, sixteen elementary, twenty-four middle, sixty-one high school kids, and eleven students who are what we call fifth years, that's eighteen to twenty-one. And some of those have been placed by prior agreements, settlements and whatnot. There's a couple of those that we're working right now to bring back into district. The last page shows the number of kids we've brought back to district this year, and we have ten. And I'm estimating another, we have kids graduating, and a few more, so I'm estimating conservatively thirteen to fourteen at the end of June. And then, we're looking at another twenty. So we have a new out-of-district coordinator, Jessica Legno, she's been, she came from Raymond Hill, which is a therapeutic school at Klingberg here in New Britain. She's doing a phenomenal job reviewing data. You can see that most of our kids are, that we have outplaced right now, there's a lot in high school. And so I think we can bring some back. The question is, do we have a place to put them? And that's what we're working on with the superintendent, to work on the continuum of services right now. So we may not have those kids back in June, but I'm confident, some of those kids, depending on what we are able to do, could come back at the first part of next year, or by January of two thousand and twenty. So we are looking at that. And again, we have some that are pending right now as well, and there are certain things beyond our control. We can't control when DCF puts a kid out, brings a kid into district, we can't control when folks move in here. But we have been able to bring back ten so far. Okay? Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I have two. One is just on the restraint and seclusion data from the high school. I noticed that, that there were only two total.
Right.
Is that-
It's not accurate.
Okay.
It's not accurate. So I'm giving you the, I'm giving, I'm providing you the data that we had from the state. So we're working with the school, and we'll certainly be populating that over. I mean, I was there, where I witnessed at least one seclusion, and that was back in September. So I know there's more than that. But I'm trying to be, I wanna be transparent with everyone. And I did, you know, the schools that had zeros, for instance, I did reach out to those principals and let them know that I'd be reporting on this today, and that we'd be working with them moving forward. So, okay.
And then the other question I had was just on the suspension data. I know you gave, the data you gave us was instances of suspension, correct?
The number and instances, correct. Now, I do have that broken down by building. I can provide you, if you-
I'm curious more, also just about how many students, because just like with seclusion restraint, you sometimes can have a student who is suspended multiple times, and I'd be curious to see what that-
So I can provide you that. I do know that the number of students involved, like I stated, has dropped by six percent from last year. Even though the number has increased, there are certain players that have increased, you know, that. So if you're looking at, for instance, it's just like the situation with the, with the kids that were in the restraints at TC. More than, you know, more than half of those were, were by just two kids, you know, out of fifty-something students. So you're gonna have a similar situation with suspensions, especially on the general ed side.
Do you wanna talk a little bit about the continuum? Do you want to talk about that tonight or not tonight?
Okay.
Melissa. Other board member questions?
Well, the continuum of services is something that you're saying you're trying to-
Well, we're working on that now. So we're working, and we just had a meeting on this. So we're rebranding some of the, so on the special ed side, we're rebranding some of the programs, and we're looking at making sure that they're, they're similar, again, from K through the high school. So we're working, for instance, we're, my office is working collaboratively with Mr. Pierce at, at the high school, to support the behavior programs there. And we want everyone to have a common language. So kids, whether they're in an elementary school or the high school, what, if you're in our, if you're in one of our behavior programs, which are now, for instance, we have Sunrise, Steps, they're similar, but everybody should be speaking the same language. Their support should be similar, the expectations should be similar. So we're working on that on the special ed side. And that, you know, not only the behavior, but also, you know, for key, for special, for autism, for Pav, which we're gonna rebrand that as well. And then we're working with the superintendent to provide supports for the general population. So whether you have a label or not, whether you have a special ed label or not, sometimes for whatever's happening in your life, you may need time to be in a smaller classroom with more supports. And so we're looking at providing, you know, in the elementary schools, over at Lincoln, for instance, changing, you know, working with this principal at the high school, and we've had discussions on what we're gonna do in Slade and Pulaski. So I think next year at this time, we're gonna be in a very, in a much better place, but it's a work in progress.
Can I just ask too, that when you're setting up these new programs, that we make sure that some of the key people are involved, have the teachers be involved, and maybe even the deans, because they're dealing with those kids a lot.
Yeah, so actually, we have been inviting, to our continuum meetings, we have been inviting administrators and some teachers and others. Heather Nicol was at one recently. So we are including them in this process. And also, when we did our PD for the special education teachers and related service providers, we had several, several of them asked that same question. And so we've talked about bringing them into that process, and also participating in some of our meetings in central office, in my department, to help us, you know, guide, guide us in the decisions we're making. Because you're right, if you're, those guys are, are at the, you know, they're in the front lines. And so their, their feedback is, is critical to us. So we are definitely taking, we're looking forward for that, working with them collaboratively, and getting their input to help us to create these programs.
Any other board questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I know I speak for myself, I think I speak for many of the board members in saying that we appreciate transparency. So we really do like the fact that when there, even if there is an issue, and there's something where people perhaps, you know, we aren't as trained as we need to be in certain areas, or the numbers aren't necessarily as rosy as we'd like, the board needs to see that. And I, we, I, we appreciate transparency, because it really helps us have a better understanding, and know where it is that we need to do more work. So thank you very much for that. Moving on, our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. It is rather lengthy. Two things to note, we are gonna be deleting item C. It is a duplicate of item I. So C will be removed and not taken up. I am also going to be removing item L. Are there any other items that board members would wish to have removed from consent?
Yes. H, J, K.
Other board members?
Well, you took mine off. Well, you had to, so.
Ms. Parker, all good? All good?
Yeah.
Ms. Cheney, all good?
Oh, that's fine.
Oh, that's okay. I was just waiting to make eye contact, that's all. Okay, so our consent agenda is, we are currently hearing no objections. The consent agenda will be approved with the exclusion of items C, H, J, K, and L. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda of the remaining items is approved. I'll entertain a motion on item four H, which is approving the purchase of, purchase order for the math expressions program.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Cheney. Dr. Sims, did you have something on this item?
Yes. Can we do H and J together? Because my questions are the same.
Definitely. Yep. So we'll entertain questions on items H and J. Is that okay if we move, amend the motion? Okay.
I'm sorry, I have hearing issues, so can you repeat the question, please, louder?
Sure, Dr. Sims.
She didn't say it yet.
She didn't ask the question.
She didn't ask yet.
You're good.
Can I have a question?
Please. We'll play past the mic if we need to.
Okay, so items H and J both have to do with math expressions and journeys. And so I have a few questions regarding who uses this. Is it elementary? What schools? In, in what way do they use these materials? I know they, for the most part, they're consumables, right? So are they co-curricular, supplemental, intervention?
I'm gonna go to the mic so that everyone can hear me. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, so H, the difference between the two is, H is for the actual math consumable books, and the elementary students K-five do not have hardcover books. So this is the one instance where if they don't have the consumable, they basically don't have a math book. So this is the only consumable that we are now purchasing. We've cut out the other consumables where they have an actual hardcover, like anthology, that can be used as a resource, such as the journeys. And that would be for letter H. And letter H, that, that amount, finance, I don't have it with me, because I didn't make it part of the packet, but we shared at finance how, over the years, we've really significantly reduced the amount that we've spent on them over the years, and the inventory system has helped a great deal with that. So we know, we no longer order what we have plenty of surplus of, so to speak, only exactly what we need with a few extras for kids that move in, so. And then for, which one is the other one? Oh, for J. So we had a six-year online subscription for accessing all of the resources online. And it expires as of August thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. So I know that, I had Steve Agnacki run usage reports for both teacher usage and for student usage. And it is very heavily used, teacher usage, I know, with our interactive Eno boards, our interactive whiteboards by teachers, and also by students, more heavily at some schools, but every school did have, when I ran the usage report, was using it at some, some instance across grade levels. It also allows for all the resources in, for English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies to be accessible online to students and teachers, both in school and at home. And all resources are also offered in both English and Spanish, in school and at home. And that's important to make sure that, for accessibility, that students can access these resources in both languages if needed. It also has the speech-to-text option, so if a child needs a story read to them, it can be read to them in multiple languages as well. This is actually, although it looks quite expensive, if you look at that dollar amount, it's a fraction of what they originally quoted me. And I asked the sales rep, I said, "We cannot afford to pay what you had quoted me for access for both," which was close to a half million dollars. And so he offered to allow us to pay for one at a reduced rate. So this is a ten percent increase from what I was originally going to pay for the English Language Arts to be accessible, and then throw in the access to the other resources free of charge, in exchange for paying for that one. This will be an extension, a three-year online extension.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Ms. Cheney, while it's over there?
No.
If you have a question, welcome. Mr. Frasier. Problem for me.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. No, I, just something that may help in the future- Um, no, I, just, uh, something that may help in the future to, uh, Ms., uh, Dr. Sims, would help if, when items like this relating to textbooks and other things like that come up, that they also get referred to curriculum as well. Just, that would be something maybe for the future. So if we could, in the future, have items, uh, that are textbook-related or testing materials, things like that, which have a financial component, but also tied to curriculum, those can be discussed at both committees and that, that way we can look at it from two different angles.
Yeah, typically, we were thinking along the lines of if something new came up that would need sort of a curriculum approval, um, but something that already was in existence, we didn't want to, um, because it's an overwhelming list, we didn't want to overwhelm two committees with, with this overwhelming list, so that was our...
We, we do appreciate that. I think if, and for some things, it might not take, take long to discuss, but, uh, it, I think it'd be better for us to have more people informed going forward.
Okay, sure.
But thank you.
Okay.
Uh, you may want to stay up, the next item is, or, this may be Mr. Taylor. Uh, so, I have a motion on items 4H and 4J. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, could I please have a motion on item 4J, approved purchase order of NWEA MAP? I'm sorry, K, I said J. Thank you. Item 4K, approved purchase order of NWEA MAP?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Cheney, seconded by Ms. Conley. Discussion?
Just because we, um, did talk about this earlier, um, in the year, and I know that there were some changes made, um, if you can update us on what grades are using this, what is the frequency, um, of use of, uh, the language and math parts, or whichever, or whichever is being used and which one is not, sort of update as to what changed this year and how we're using that data moving forward, how is it going to be used?
We, uh, we tested K3 in reading, uh, three, well, grades one, two, and three, three times, fall, winter, and we'll do it again in the spring. That's state mandated, so we have to do that. We did, um, we used to also do K in the fall. That was not state mandated, so we took that off, off the plate. These licenses include math and language usage, which we as a district used to require. We've taken that off the plate and said, "If you're a teacher that uses that, or a school that really uses that and likes that tool, please go ahead, the license is there, we've paid for it, you have access to it." But we no longer said, "You have to do this testing if the teacher's not using it in the classroom, or the school's not using it to guide some of their, um, you know, their own individual goals." So fourth and fifth grade, um, we do require the reading to be assessed in the fall. Um, we use this data for many grants, and, including our summer school program, which is, uh, you know, received national attention. Again, we have those licensed there for teachers who want to use it. So what we've done is, is made where we can, made it optional for those teachers and schools that find value in the tool. And for those that don't, okay, pull back, we'll use something else. I've looked at a little bit of the data, I would say that language usage is not used as much as it was. I, I would say math, you have, um, about half and half. I'd say about 50%, and some of it's school-based, some of it's teacher-based. Um, but I, I think it's, it's done well. It'd be nice, you know, this is the first year, so it'd be nice to look at the numbers for the whole year, um, and, and see which schools are using it more than others, and see if there's any comparison there on the state testing, which kind of provides a, a, a way of, of, of looking at the value of this particular assessment.
We're trying to balance a lot with four and five, especially when they have, um, heavy testing schedules in the fall with, uh, like you're getting spring with Sback, and then grade five with the NGSS on top of that. So not killing them with assessment, you know, and that was, that was part of our, um, idea was to try to make it a little more balanced for them, so that they just feel they were assessed all the time. The Sback is, uh, it's tough.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other board members?
Okay, um, with, if there are no other questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving item 4K, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item up is 4L. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase, uh, purchase order for Google Expeditions?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by, uh, Ms. Cheney. Before I turn this over, Ms. Conley, who I know wants to rant and rave about this in a positive way, uh, I'd like to direct the board members, there's actually a correction that Mr. Kane sent, uh, sent to us, it's in our packet, and it's just an amendment to the purchase order. So, uh, I would like to entertain a motion, a motion to amend the funding source to be SIG, and also to amend the accounts and amounts, uh, to reflect the, uh, amounts from the email that Mr. Kane sent to us. Do I have a motion for that amendment? Ms. Conley, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Sims. Any discussion of the amendment? Okay, so everyone's clear, this is an amendment just to change the funding source, to actually be fully accurate, this was an update from, uh, from Mr. Kane. All those in favor of the amendment signify, yes?
Sig grant, isn't that tied to particular schools?
Which is also why you see the different amounts from the different accounts. So all of those funds are from different schools. So the total purchase order will be funded from, uh, six different SIG accounts. Any other questions on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, back to the motion as amended, now you can...
I was just gonna say, Laura will probably explain it better than me, but it's like super cool technology, so our kids could put, I don't know what they're called, they could put those goggles on and like go to different places. Like, how cool is that? Like, there's 30 of them, and they can, you know, go through each, each school, move around. We even said, "Can you bring them to the board, we're gonna make Nancy do it in front of, like, everybody, but..."
That is what I said.
Yeah, I did, I did say it. Laura can probably explain it better, but I'm just so excited for them, I like want to be in the school when they first pull them out.
We'll have to, we'll have to make sure that we send you an invite. So, so if anyone's a fan of Ms. Frizzle, if anyone watched Magic School Bus, kind of take yourself to that sort of thing, except not in a cartoon. That's, that's kind of how I think about Google Expedition. Um, the, it's, it's basically an app, the app is free, so what you see the cost for there are the supplies for students to be able to use, um, the app within the classroom. So you've got goggles, like you said, or, or that the students are gonna put on, um, you have selfie sticks, you have, so that the students can kind of, um, hold the selfie sticks away and, um, and look at things like a beehive from different angles, those kinds of things. So you have virtual reality and you have augmented reality. Are you gonna do something fancy?
Not this time.
Okay.
You did?
So virtual reality, think tours, think, um, think like Washington DC, for example. Um, so, you know, we, we do a field trip with some students, but we can also do virtual reality trips for other students. Um, augmented reality, think, um, think go to Mars and kind of look at, look at Mars while you're there, or, um, or look at the inside and the outside of a beehive, or go inside the human body. So when we think about some of the STEAM, um, projects that, that students have done, you know, we can take them to a golf course, so they've been creating their own golf courses or, or, um, golf holes. We can take them to different golf courses and look at the terrain, or look at, um, at different pieces. So, yes, we can bring them here, I don't have them because that would kind of be the cool, it's only so exciting you can get about the actual piece of paper that the PO is on, so, um, but, um, we're gonna get 30 devices, um, with viewers, and also cases to make them more mobile, so that we can take them from, um, from place to place. And you have a, a visual there, is that?
I do.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Jeff.
So it really wasn't anything bad, I just, I'm so excited about it.
You did, you did a great job getting excited, though. And it, and it is exciting, and we will, we will be able to bring them here, and you can kind of try them out, you can kind of picture somebody trying to, to touch different things that look like they're in front of you. The future is here, so, um, we wanna kind of keep up with it. So there you see the, the goggles and the, I don't know what the base is called, but the little thing with all the antennas in it, I don't know what that piece is called.
It's basically like a portable server.
Oh, and 360-degree cameras, we're, the 360-degree cameras come with it as well.
Turbo-over-view master.
I've actually had a chance to experience this, cause, uh, the district I work in got, got us set, and they, they use it within the district, and teachers sign it out, and they have, uh, support staff who bring it into the schools and lead these expositions. And it's not just like staring at a static picture, it's when you turn your head, what you're seeing changes. Um, and I think this technology is going to really grow into, I don't know if they have full motion video immersion yet, but I could see it coming in the future. Um, and it really is kind of fascinating, it's so neat, because when you're watching the kids doing it for the first time, you see a room with their, on their face, and they're all just doing this, and you have no idea what they're looking at? If you're, if you just walk into the room, but they're all very much engaged, and they're pointing things out to each other, uh, it's, it's a really neat immersive experience.
So it comes with, um, there's 100 virtual reality tours and 100 augmented reality tours, so, and I'm sure that that platform will expand as well.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, yay, technology, opposed? No, motion carries. Excellent. Okay, and that takes us all the way to new business. So, n- next item on our agenda is item 5A. Uh, this was actually a walk-in that is in our packet, but this is a bid waiver for Lost Links, uh, the Lost Links assessment. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the bid waiver?
Motion.
Do I have a second? A motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Parker. Uh, discussion? I believe, I believe it was, yeah, I believe the paper, paperwork was in our folder. Yep, there it is.
Hi, Jeff, is this the first year that the district is going fully digital, or did they already take them all on terminals this year? So, or is the upcoming the first time?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer, I, I...
Cause I saw the reference to the Chromebook stuff.
Right, I believe, and Jeff, maybe you can help me here, if not, uh, Dr. Sims, I can get you the answer and email it to you. I believe it was all digital last year, or no, I'm gonna take that back. The year before was it all digital, last year was a combination, it was hybrid, paper, pencil, and digital?
I believe last year was all digital, and...
It was?
Well, I recall we had all, we looked at it on the Chromebook. Previous year was...
Okay.
So this past March or whatever?
It was all digital last year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item up is 5B. Can I have a motion to accept a grant, excuse me, accept a grant from the community foundation to establish behavioral transition plan from preschool to kindergarten for $30,000?
Second.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Gay, seconded by Ms. Conley. Uh, and if Megan Adams would like to come up and just speak to this briefly?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
So, um, we wrote a, I'm Megan Adams, hi, I'm the school readiness liaison. We wrote a proposal to develop this district-wide behavioral transition team, essentially, because what we started noticing was that our kids coming in from our community preschools have some behavior concerns, social-emotional concerns, and we want to find a way to alleviate those when they come into kindergarten. We pulled the data for our, um, I guess you could say our referrals, or behavior referrals in kindergarten, from last year, and it was pretty high, it was about 22% of students had some sort of behavior referral in kindergarten. And so the purpose of this plan is to put supports in place in the community preschool programs, so that the community programs are more equipped with, you know, response to intervention, how to write behavior plans, how to develop behavior health themes, so that when the students come to us, they're more ready for kindergarten and, and the expectations that we're putting on them. Um, the second part of this is that we have partnered, well, I wouldn't call it partner, we have an MOU with the hospital for special care. John Moltany is a, um, BCBA. He is going to be providing the behavior services. There is a timeline for his work to go into the community, so that we can start the, the process of getting the community programs where they should be. Um, we're gonna focus on three-tiered interventions, and, um, we've already started with providing them with RTI training, so we're just hoping to keep the work moving forward and hope that in the fall, we see less behavior referrals for kindergartners.
Thank you very much. Uh, questions from board members? Mr. Gay?
So was there an analysis of the data of referral, kindergarten referrals by kids who've been in the school districts preschool versus community program?
We, I, I wasn't able to pull that, but I think that's something we could look into. I say, um, I know, I'm sure we could pull the data from who's received referrals, and then look at their kindergarten, or, I'm sorry, look at their preschool experience surveys, so that we have a better idea as to if they had preschool, and if so, probably where.
And, um, has there been any look at the, um, ages of the kids who are having referrals?
Yes, so, so we've looked at, we didn't break that down, but we are looking at how many students are coming into kindergarten, uh, essentially at four years old, and I want to say, when we last pulled the data, we're going, about 33% of the kids that are going to be coming to us in the fall, don't turn five until September, October, November, or December. So, so it's a pretty large number of students. We didn't want to focus on the younger kids, essentially, because we didn't want to make a false assumption that they're academically not prepared for school, so, so we wanted to kind of hold off on that stigma a little bit, and see what the data's showing us for the future.
But there is a plan to actually look at that data?
Yeah.
Other questions from board members?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is 5C, and this is, uh, board action to certify that all foods sold to students will meet the connected nutritional standards. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gay, seconded by Ms. Conley. Uh, any discussion?
Did this come to committee?
Uh, no, this did not come to policy, this is a standard thing that we address almost every year, um, and has to do with, the board has to make this annual certification in order, I believe, to come...
This is something we talked about, the wellness, you know, yes.
Okay.
It is connected to the reimbursement rate we get for, um, the school meals.
For federal funds.
Yeah, federal funds for that.
Who certifies it? Not the board itself, but the school certifies, right?
Jean Alflano is the, she's the overseer, or the keeper of, um, she runs a very tight ship with that.
Ms. Parker?
So that means that for fundraisers, they can't sell food?
No.
No, it doesn't mean that, it just means...
It spelled out certain after-hours things where it would not apply. You read the policy.
There, there are some limitations as to what should be going on during the day as part of school, school-sponsored activities and school-provided food, things like that.
You can still sell pies and butterbraids as fundraisers, so you can serve them in the school.
Right.
What'd you say?
I said, "You can still serve, you can still sell pies and butterbraids as fundraisers, you just can't serve them during the school day."
Oh, okay.
And you can still sell the stuff at the basketball games and all that, but you can't do it during the school day.
It's after hours, it's after events, yeah.
Right. Okay, I just didn't, it says it was referred to committee on March 18th, and I recall, I was not there, but there says no, it says no subcommittee, but on the, it says subcommittee.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have a couple items, I apologize, uh, they are in our board packet, these are just some policies that we had postponed to this meeting for a second reading, uh, so, I would like, I'll try to get these as quick as possible. Can I have a motion to add item 5F to the agenda of 5... Can I have a motion to add item 5F to the agenda, five policy statement regarding students who are pregnant, married, and/or parents?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Cheney. All those in favor of adding the item to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve item 5F would be the same policy that I just stated.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Sims. Discussion of the motion. This is just an update to our policy, we did change the language significantly, but this is a second reading. We tried to make it more reflective of what our current practices are, because the policy had not been updated since the mid-'90s. So, go on. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is motion to add an item 5G to the agenda, this is for policy 6164.11, Drug Education. Entertain a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Cheney. All of those in favor of adding the item to the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve policy 6164.11, Drug Education?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. G, seconded by Ms. Conley. You can see on the front is our current policy, and then on the back is the updated policy. And again, this is just to bring it more in line with updated state requirements, and specifically citing out some of the areas of Connecticut general statutes that have Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to add an item 5H regarding staff development, policy 4131 and 4231, to the agenda?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. Sims, seconded by Ms. Conley. All, all those in favor of adding the item to the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve policy 41, 4131 slash 4231 on staff development?
Motion.
A motion made by Ms. Sims, seconded by Ms. Conley. This is, again, updating our staff development policy to reflect, I believe you just got two copies of the same thing in your folder.
I was just gonna say, I think I got the same. And this was on committee on the 18th, or just a second read?
Yes, this is a second read. This had already gone through committee, this is a second read on this policy.
I just don't remember it. Okay.
And this is just updating, again, to be in line with the latest Connecticut general statutes, which do often change what we're required to provide professional development on. I believe we also noted a policy that we do want to, similar to our pupil services, look at what we are offering to our staff, and making sure that we're in compliance with all of the, all the state law regarding that. Any other discussion?
I remember now.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item, I promise, I know.
Oh, that one's the easy one.
Yeah, this one's easy. I'd like to add a motion, add an item to the agenda as item 5I, this will be striking board policy 5145.52, which is equalized physical, physical education and athletics for boys and girls.
Motion.
Say it again.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Dr. Sims. All those in favor of adding the item to the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to strike policy 5145.52, equalized physical education and athletics for boys and girls, from our policies?
Motion.
Motion made by Dr. Sims, seconded by Mr. Gay. And just for informational purposes, this is a policy from 1985. That somehow escaped the first perch, but this is, most of everything that's in this is covered under Title IX now, it's really a very redundant policy in, in light of many of our other policies on equal opportunities and nondiscrimination, so it just felt extremely redundant to have in our books. Any other discussion? Comments?
No, just as long as they, like, we're not, we're not striking the policy because we don't believe in the equal opportunity. We have everything that covers this policy from 1985.
Yes. Yeah. I, this is a motion that I hope is not being taken out of context.
Right, like, you just say, like, because when you read it, but we know that it's covered by Title IX, and, and every other policy that's out there.
Very similar to when the board removed our old policy regard, requiring, talking about the requirement of fire drills. Not that we've stopped doing fire drills, it's just something that we no longer needed to have a documented policy on.
I mean, and it wasn't very thorough, it's from 1985, and it's two sentences. So, I mean, we, we do a better job of covering this now under the Title IX. I mean, we even have, even in 85, did we have, what's the program, Unified Sports in 85?
No.
Right, that's what I mean, like, we didn't even have Unified Sports in 85, and that, that is covered under this policy that we can get rid of, because we have everything else.
The policy, not Unified Sports.
Not Unified Sports, no, no.
In 85, we were still talking about, like, having girls sports.
Right, right, right. Well, no, wait a minute, simmer down a minute.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Now that we've cleared all of that up, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I appreciate the board's tolerance as we added all of those items, and on a related note, I would like to, we had already voted on as part of our consent agenda, but we have Kristin, Kristin Salerni, who is going to be taking on the role of board clerk. We, we lost Matt last month, so hopefully, next month, she'll have all these kinks worked out, and it'll be smooth sailing, because a good board clerk makes us just, it makes the meetings flow a lot better.
Right.
So, thank you, and welcome on board, and we look forward to working with you. And on that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It is 8:23, and we are adjourned.